Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 5th County Planning Commission Hearing. I'm Kate Ford. I'm the Chair of the County Planning Commission, so please stand and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, come on, Chair. Mr. Vialobos, could you please continue with the TV coverage announcement, followed by the roll call?
Yes, thank you, ma'am Chair. And good morning to the Commission. Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. In the South Coast, Longhoke, San Inez Valley, Samaria, and Orca areas, rebroadcast of Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV, Channel 20. Today's hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website, as well as the county's YouTube channel will be available for download in a day or two. Moving on to roll call, Commissioner Cooney here.
Commissioner Park.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
And Chair Ford.
Here.
And Commissioner Martinez will be absent this meeting.
Thank you. Also, as a reminder, you can watch any County Planning Commission hearings after the fact on the archives on YouTube, as Mr. Reed reminded me last week. Mr. Wilson, will you continue with the status report and then follow up with the projection report, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair. In regards to the status of our agenda today, we have two items on the standard agenda. The first item is Myers Mixed Use Project, and then the second item is the continued discussion on the environmental justice element of the comprehensive plan. My understanding is staff and applicants are prepared to present on both of those items. And just a word of note is that today we do have interpretive services that are available for members of the public that may be desiring those services. And then moving on to the projection report, our next hearing would have been next week, November 12th, but we canceled it at a prior hearing. Actually, we didn't cancel that.
No, I'm about to.
I was just hopeful to cancel that. We may want to cancel that later at the end of this report. Moving down into December, we have a number of items on December 3rd, and that hearing will be here in Santa Barbara. We have an appeal, two appeals by Peterson, and then we have a general zoning ordinance amendment package, and then we have a workshop on the recreation master plan. And then December 10th, we did cancel that at our former hearing. And then we don't have anything else for this year, and then we will return in January. As of right now, the only thing projected in January is on the 28th, which is an appeal on that day. We may get items for the earlier hearing in January as we move closer to that date, but as of right now, we don't have anything. And then in prior years, we have had a holiday luncheon. As of right now, the date that looks available is December 10th, which we've canceled. December 3rd is a very busy day. We might not have time for an extended holiday luncheon on the 3rd, but we will get back to the Commission on that date. And I do believe Commissioner Park may be unavailable on December 10th.
That's right.
Due to having a bionic hip. But that is concludes the projection report.
Thanks very much. Also, as you mentioned, there are no hearings this time projected for next Wednesday, November 12th. So colleagues, I wonder if I could call for a motion to cancel the November 12, 2025 meeting, hearing?
I'll move we cancel the November 12 hearing.
Thank you. And a second?
Second. May I speak to that?
You may.
Just a word of caution is we couldn't possibly notice anything for the 12th, okay? The only reason the 12th might be useful is if we needed to continue this hearing to the 12th for some reason. And I doubt that will happen on our first agenda item. I guess it's conceivable it could happen on the second agenda item. I would think on the second agenda item, if there was a reason to continue it, it'd be better to continue it for more than a week. But it, just in a super abundance of caution, I think it might be better to wait to see what we get done this morning before we cancel that thing on the 12th. That being said, I'd vote to cancel it, but just had to say that.
Thank you for your comment. I think we'll go ahead with the vote, please. Call for the roll call.
Commissioner Cooney.
Aye.
Commissioner Park.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Chair Ford.
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
And I did have another question on the projection report.
Please, go ahead.
Yes. On the 3rd, okay, is it possible for us to presume that we'll get most of our work done on the other items in the morning, and that we could have a time certain for when people could expect to join the workshop on the rec master plan, which I think will be well attended? You know, you might, for example, get things done in the morning and then say the workshop will start at 1:15, or 1 o'clock, or 1:30. That might allow you to accommodate your holiday luncheon as well.
Madam Chair, and Commissioner Park, looking at the items on December 3rd, we do have two appeals, and those are very difficult to gauge as of the time, so they will may take up most of the morning. And then we have the general ordinance amendment package, which I think will be generally straightforward.
Isn't that two appeals in the same case, though?
No, they're two different cases.
Oh, it's not?
Yes. So we're going to have to hear them separately.
Yeah, I got you.
We may be able to truncate some of the appeal issues because they're the exact same appeal issues, but they are two separate cases. So that's going to take up most of the morning. I'm a little cautious of doing a time certain on the rec master plan, other than it's foreseeable it won't happen until the afternoon. So that would be about the best time certain we could do is that it would be heard in the afternoon.
Well, yeah, even if we let people know it won't be heard until the afternoon, that's a big difference. Thanks.
Thanks very much. So on to public comments. Mr. Vialobos, are there any requests for public testimony in person or online on items that are not on today's agenda?
I have no speaker slips. For those of us joining us online, if you have liked to speak at this portion of our public comment, raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Seeing no hands raised.
Thanks. So now I'd like to just ask my fellow colleagues on the Commission if any of you would like to announce a report on anything that is related to our work. I see no lights. So we'll go forward to ask Director Plowman to please continue with your report and hearing summary, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I have some things to report from board actions over the last couple of weeks. The board had several items on the 21st of October. One was the coastal commission modifications to the cannabis ordinance package, and that was, those were minor changes, just clarifications, and so the board approved that. They heard a report on the idle and orphan wells that are in the county as a precursor to the discussion about oil and gas operations in the county and what the future of those operations are in the county. And the board at that hearing did give the staff direction to move forward with a, an ordinance that would, in an immediate fashion, that would prohibit new wells from being drilled. We don't currently have applications in for new wells at this time, so that would be, that's going to take six months or so. That's something, it's, I'm not sure exactly which codes we're going to be amending with that, and that will depend on whether or not it comes back to the Commission. I don't believe we bring the petroleum code before the Commission. But if it does result in changes to the Land Use and Development Code or the Coastal Zoning Ordinance, those items would be before the Planning Commission. And then the board directed, CSD is going to be working on a amortization study for the broader oil and gas operations within the County of Santa Barbara, and what, how much time is needed for these owners of these facilities to meet their investment-backed expectations, right? And so that's a couple of year process, including an environmental impact report associated with that. So that's something that will begin probably sometime after we process that first ordinance package. That ordinance package did, at the board's direction, displace the, out of this year's work program, the short-term rentals. So that's going to get bumped another year, and that's just in the coastal zone. And then on the 4th, which was yesterday, the board heard the building code update. And so we've now, we'll, starting January 1, we'll have the updated California building code, and then we made some tweaks to our local code. We added, you know, we have the ability to issue emergency permits in emergency situations for land use permits or coastal development permits, but we did not have something in the building code that was a companion provision. And so we added that yesterday. We had essentially been issuing permits through the building code, but didn't, was just sort of, we had, we had interpreted the ability to do that, and so now we have clarified that in the code. And, and the Sable transfer of ownership, guarantor, and operator was heard by the board yesterday, and it was quite a long hearing, and the board voted for one to uphold the appeal of the Planning Commission's decision, I think based on some of the things that have transpired since the board last heard it in February. You can certainly listen to the tape and get a sense of the board's deliberations. So for now, that is, that, that's, that will be denied, and we'll be bringing findings for denial back to the board on December 16th for their final action. My expectation is that a lot of this stuff will be in the courts for quite some time. About the meaning of all that. And in terms of future, oh dear, oh, crack, sorry, spilled my tea.
Don't worry.
Future board items, we have the county's comprehensive fee ordinance going to the board on December 9th, and then again, well, it takes two hearings on the 16th. We have the Sutar appeal going on the 9th of December. And then the streamlining in ordinance housing accommodation package that the PC has heard will be going on the 16th of December. And that is all of the items that we have that will be moving forward in this calendar year. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioners, Mr. Park.
You mentioned a report on, was it abandoned and orphaned wells, or, okay, is that a written report?
Commissioner Park, through the chair, yes, it is. It's a separate It's a separate board letter.
Is that available to the public? Could I get a hold of it? I'd love to see that.
Yeah, yeah. If you go to the agenda on the board's website and you find that item, you can find the staff report at that, on that item, all the materials associated with it.
Good. Yeah, well, I'd love to have a copy of that. Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other comments or questions, clarifying questions, let's move forward. There are no items today for the consent agenda, so we're going to move on to the standard agenda, which, as we know, there are two today. So with that, Mr. Villa Lobos, please read item number one into the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a hearing on the request of BNI Ascend LLC to consider case numbers 23D VP1 and as well as 25GOV2 and to determine the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15183 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thanks. May I first ask for any ex parte reports from my colleagues on the commission? Mr. Reed, please.
Yes, I did a, following our meeting of last week, I stopped by the site in Los Alamos and walked the lot and looked at the neighborhood and just looked at the building site. Since then, I've had two telephonic conversations with Mr. David Swink, the owner's agent on the project.
No other ex parte comments, so I think we should continue with the applicant's presentation. Please introduce yourselves.
Staff presentation.
Sorry, staff presentation. I skipped ahead.
Good morning, Chair Ford and Commissioners. My name is Tina Mitchell, and today I'll be presenting the Meyer mixed-use project. The project site is a 0.46 acre vacant lot located at the intersection of Bell Street and Augusta Street in Los Alamos. All of the lots immediately adjacent to the project site are also currently vacant, but there are nearby residences and businesses, including Bob's Well-Bread Bakery to the west and the Chevron Gas Station across Bell Street. The project site is relatively flat and doesn't contain any trees, native vegetation, or drainage features. This map shows the current zoning for the project site and surrounding parcels. The project is within the CMLA Zone District, which stands for Community Mixed Use Los Alamos. The properties to the south are zoned for residential uses, and the properties to the north are zoned for general commercial uses. Projects in the CMLA Zone are subject to the Bell Street Design Guidelines, which include standards that define where buildings can be located on the lot and guidelines that are intended to preserve and enhance the area's rural western character. The proposed project includes a development plan and a government code section 65402 conformity determination. The development plan includes approximately 16,000 square feet of structural development, including a two-story mixed-use building, three short-term rentals, a standalone commercial building, and a trash enclosure. The mixed-use building will be two stories with the first floor used for general commercial retail space, and the second floor will have a residential apartment unit and a commercial fitness studio, and then general office and circulation areas to support the fitness studio. A development plan is required in the CMLA Zone District for structures that total 15,000 or more square feet in gross floor area. The government code conformity determination is needed because the project includes a five-foot-wide dedication to the county for public road and utility purposes. This dedication is a requirement of the Public Works Department in order for Waite Street to be consistent with the Public Works engineering design standards. The staff report for the project analyzes the project's consistency with the comprehensive plan, and Public Works will take that analysis as a consistency report to the board when the dedication is accepted. This is the site plan for the proposed project with some key elements pointed out. Starting on the top right, we have the mixed-use building fronting Bell Street and the northern portion of Augusta Street. And then moving to the top left, you'll see the three short-term rentals labeled as cottages A, B, and C. The five-foot right-of-way dedication is outlined in orange here. It's along Waite Street. And the standalone commercial building is tucked behind the cottages. The project also includes quite a bit of improvement in the right-of-way areas, including sidewalks, curb, gutters, and also landscaping, which I'll show on the next slide. This also includes the addition of angled parking along Augusta Street, which is highly encouraged by the policies in the Los Alamos Community Plan. As part of the normal post-entitlement process, the project will need to obtain an encroachment permit and design exception approvals from Public Works. The Public Works Transportation Division has reviewed the project and all right-of-way encroachments extensively to make sure that all aspects are feasible to implement, and they did provide conceptual approval of all design elements that will go in the county And here's the site landscaping plan. As you can see, there are several street trees and landscaping in the right-of-way areas and then throughout the site. The center portion of the lot includes four voluntary onsite parking spaces. The CMLA Zone District doesn't require onsite parking for commercial uses or projects with two or fewer dwelling units, and this project only has one dwelling unit, so they have voluntary onsite parking. There's also a shared courtyard area in the center with landscaping and decorative This slide shows the elevations for the project as viewed from the three roadways surrounding the site. The mixed-use building fronting Bell Street is the largest structure in the project. The maximum height at the roof ridge is 35 feet, which is the height limit for the zone, and it has an architectural feature that extends up to about 43 feet, but the land use code does allow for that element to exceed the height limit. The heights of the structures on the Waite Street side range from about 17 feet to 24 feet. And the project as a whole is subject to design review by the Board of Architectural Review, and it has received their preliminary approval. The project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the Los Alamos Community Plan and the Bell Street Design Guidelines, as well as the Land Use and Development Code. The CMLA Zone District has a lot of unique requirements that aren't common in the county because it's a form-based code section that has very specific setbacks and build-to lines. The applicant has worked very carefully to meet these requirements, and there's extensive analysis of each applicable standard in the staff report. There is one modification request to allow some project components to encroach in the five-foot setback area from Waite Street, and one exception request to provide for additional setback area between the mixed-use building and the western property line. I'll show those requests on a site plan next, so you have a visual. But just to wrap this slide up, with this modification and exception, the project is consistent with all policies and standards pertaining to adequate public services, landscaping requirements, aesthetics, stormwater drainage, as well as the rest of the policies in the comprehensive plan. And overall, it's an infill site that is appropriate for this type and scale of development. The modification request would allow portions of cottages A and B and the loading space to encroach into the five-foot setback area from Waite Street, which is outlined in orange. The project was originally designed to meet the setback of five feet from Waite, but the required five-foot right-of-way dedication will push the setback area closer to the development by five feet. The exception request would allow for some setback area rather than none between the western property line and the edge of the mixed-use building. That's outlined in orange at the top of the screen there. The project will be consistent with all development standards with the approval of these two requests. Staff is supportive of these requests because the project will continue to meet the intent of the design guidelines, which encourage pedestrian circulation and certain architectural encroachments into the right-of-way. Staff reviewed the project subject to section 15183 of the SEQA guidelines. This section allows projects that are consistent with a community plan for which an environmental impact report was certified to be exempt from environmental review when the project complies with allowed density and will not result in impacts that weren't previously identified. Staff analyzed the proposed project and reviewed the Los Alamos Community Plan, EIR, and found that the project impacts are adequately addressed by development standards and policies in the community plan. Attachment C2 of the staff report provides a complete discussion of the environmental impacts identified in the community plan, EIR, and the analysis documenting how the proposed project will not create more severe or environmental impacts. Based on this review, staff recommends that the commission follow the procedures outlined on this slide in order to approve the project. One, make the required findings for approval as specified in attachment A of the staff report, including SEQA findings. Two, determine the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to section 15183. Three, approve the development plan, including the modification and exception requests subject to the conditions of approval of attachment B in the staff report. And four, direct staff to transmit the government code section 65402 conformity report to the real property division and the board of supervisors. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. We also have Will Robertson via Zoom from Public Works Transportation, and then the applicant team is here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. How about some clarifying questions from my colleagues, please? Mr. Reed.
Yeah, I noticed in the staff report, you know, this project was first initiated back in 2021. So there have been four years of time, and I would assume expense on the part of the applicant to get it from that original state to its current state. Could you take like a minute, just a snapshot of all the work and effort and collaboration with various departments, the state, et cetera, that happened from its inception to bring it up to its current state?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. Yeah, I'll do my best. So when this project first came to us in 2021, it was a land use permit, and it was definitely smaller in size. We only had the mixed-use building and two of the cottages. And we worked with the applicant on meeting the design standards for that project. And then in about 2022, they decided to add some more to the project. So we added a third cottage and then the additional commercial building. After looking at that, we found that it was going to exceed the development plan threshold. So that changed this project into a development plan, which requires a little more review from departments, for sure. So Public Works ended up having that condition of the right-of-way dedication. The applicant worked very closely with us. You know, they're trying to put a lot on this lot, and we have those specific build-to and setbacks, and they've really come through on making this work.
Okay.
And then Public Works coordination was definitely a big part of the process, especially making sure that the encroachments were going to work and are going to be feasible and getting that conceptual approval. And then lastly, yes, we did route this project to Caltrans for the Bell Street, State Route 135 side, just to make sure that it was going to work on their end, and they've cleared it conceptually, too.
Juggling all those requirements and dealing with various elements of county government and Caltrans and the Bell Street corridor things, and the CMLA reminds me of a circus act we used to see where he's balancing all the plates at one time and trying to get the things.
Indeed.
So I think it demonstrates a lot of commitment and willingness on part of applicant to come out with the best project possible. Tell me a bit about, apparently originally, it was conceived as a multifamily on the rentals, and now it's finally emerged with three short-term rentals.
Commissioner, or, yeah, Commissioner Reed through the chair. Yes, so the original project had the two cottages as single-family dwellings, and once it pushed to three cottages, we ran into an issue with our code because the definition of multiple dwelling unit requires it to be one building. That could potentially change in the future, but for now, that is our code requirement. So we told the applicant, hey, if you want to keep it as dwelling units, you might have to, you would have to make this one building instead of three separate units. The other option to keep your layout would be to make these short-term rentals. So that's the path they decided to take, yeah.
Okay, so it consists now of the three short-term rentals and the one larger 2,700-plus square foot long-term rental in the building. Are those short-term rentals, are they going to be operated as like an A, B, and B, or what's the intent for those?
Yeah.
The three cottages?
Yeah, so short-term rentals, it would, yeah, be something like an Airbnb. Essentially, it has to be rented out 30 days or less at a time for it to be considered a short-term rental. In the future, they could potentially convert those to single-family dwellings if our code allows for it in the future. That is definitely a possibility. They would just have to come back in and get a change of use permit through us.
Okay, and then with respect to the larger, long-term rental in the building, second story?
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the drawings, and it looks, I guess I'll get into that with applicant. Just the design on it looks a little different than what I would expect from a typical apartment. But now, with respect to the encroachment in the rear of the five-foot setback area along Waite Street?
Yeah.
Now, that was only necessitated after the dedication of the five-foot strip to Public Works?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. Yes, yeah, so once the five-foot dedication was required, it kind of pushed their building right up to where the new right-of-way line will be. When they originally designed the project, it was going to meet that setback. We don't have any concerns since we've routed this to Public Works. They've cleared the encroachments in that area. It's just going to be these short-term rental uses, so we don't expect it to impact the right-of-way area in any detrimental manner, so.
Okay, then the exception request on the west side of the lot to allow for two- to five-foot setbacks instead of zero? So to give a greater setback requires an exception?
Yeah, so, and this is specifically from the CMLA Zone District standards. It allows for an exception to be granted by the review authority. Essentially, they just wanted to create some flexibility for, to provide a setback if it's going to facilitate pedestrian movement to the back of the lot, and that's exactly what is going on here.
I understand that, but it's just unusual. Usually, we hear complaints about needing more setback.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's an interesting change. Now, I'd like to look at the parking. So along Augusta Street, right now, the proposal is for diagonal. If that is not supported, it could revert to parallel? And what has to be done for it to remain as proposed with diagonal?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. Yeah, so they have the angled parking along Augusta Street, and that has to go through the encroachment permit process. And Public Works let us know that the angled parking has to get a resolution from the board to be accepted. However, they explained to us that it's more of a formality and it shouldn't be an issue with the board. But yes, if for some reason they didn't accept it, it would revert to parallel parking. The project would still be consistent with all development standards and the community plan with that.
Another question. If we look at the staff report, page 14, you're talking about the noise element policy?
Okay.
You say in there one, you know, consistent, fifth line says the surrounding properties are currently vacant. But if I look to the west, you have Bob's Well-Bread, which is not vacant, but are there certain other criteria to identify them as a sensitive receptor?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. So the project, or, sorry, the parcel directly to the west is currently vacant, and then... So the project, or sorry, the parcel directly to the west is currently vacant, and then right after that is Bob's Wellbred Bakery.
Okay.
I don't, we consider like residential uses to be sensitive. I think like hotels are considered sensitive, yeah.
That's fine. I wouldn't anticipate anything happening that is going to bother Bob's Wellbred.
Yeah.
The fact that it said vacant, I just, I wanted to get that satisfied. Now, one last thing with respect to parking. You have the loading zone in the rear.
Yes.
I mean, along Waite Street. Now, is that going, intended to be used for all loading, for the mercantile, for the cottages, and for that little commercial? Is all the loading going to occur from that site? I'm just trying to get at, like, in a lot of commercial developments, you wind up with delivery trucks out in the street, like on Bell Street or on Augusta Street, where they're running something in. Or is all the loading going to be conducted through that loading dock, loading driveway?
Yeah, Commissioner Reed through the chair. That is a commercial loading space, so it would serve all of the commercial uses on site. That meets the requirements for commercial loading spaces in our code.
Okay, so deliveries and things aren't going to impede the normal flow of traffic on Bell Street?
Correct.
All right. One last one, so far. Okay, I'm looking at these elevations. I think they're great. I like, I mean, I'm not supposed to use an adjective like that. I find they're attractive. But, okay, when I'm looking at the Augusta Street view, which is pretty much the first thing people are going to see when they drive into Los Alamos. Okay, the mercantile, is that going to be a pedestrian entrance right in the middle? Are customers, people utilizing that commercial property right in the center, right above the word mercantile?
Yeah.
That's going to be a pedestrian entrance? Same as along Bell Street?
Yeah, Commissioner Reed through the chair. That's my understanding. The applicant might have more explanation on what they're envisioning.
Okay. And I'll ask, I got a couple of questions about the commercial applications, but, and then with respect, you mentioned C2, which is back here, Analysis, Attachment C2 Analysis of the Environmental Effects, and that's pretty comprehensive in its coverage of the Bell Street and the CMLA and SEQA and all of that. Is that kind of like a one-stop shop for any questions with respect to that?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. Yeah, so the 15183 analysis goes into each issue area studied in the community plan, EIR, in detail, and basically analyzes this project compared to what was anticipated in the community plan.
Okay.
And there's nothing.
And last thing. Unlike some of the other proposals we've seen in Los Alamos, there seems to be an absence of complaints, letters of complaint. In fact, the only public comment we see seems to be universally in approval of that. Is that accurate?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. That's accurate. I have not received anything negative on this project.
And it has been duly posted and noticed, is?
Yes, yes.
All right. Well, thank you. That's the end of my questions.
Thank you. Really helpful historic perspective. Mr. Cooney or Mr. Park, any questions?
Oh, I'm just thinking that with Ms. Mitchell's extensive presentation and answering all the incisive questions from our commissioner, that they're going to miss this project. And there are so many potential changes, but I'm sure if they ask, we will take them one at a time, right? Thank you for a real good presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. With that, now we can go on to the applicant presentation, please.
Good morning, members of the commission. David Swank for the applicant. It's been quite a while since I've been in front of this commission, so it's nice to see you guys again. I've been kind of in other jurisdictions lately. Representing the applicants, they're here with us today, Ian and Britt Meyer for the Meyer Mixed Use Project. We also have via Zoom, the project architect, Greg Revat, and also the project engineer, David Chanley. Should you have any questions for them two as well? So the, as we mentioned, before I even start, I really would like to thank staff for all of the work you've done in helping to get this project to today. It has been a long, a long journey. A lot of things have changed in this project. This was originally one of Dan Blau's legacy projects, so we're going to build this in his memory. He was the first person that they had worked with when this was actually designed with his help at that time. So, and when we went through the process, there has been a lot of morphing as this project has changed over the time. So as we've mentioned, Tina, there's a lot of things I can just bounce over because she did a really good job. I'm actually going to expedite mine because I really want to turn this over to Ian and Britt to talk about their vision and what they would like to do to Los Alamos and with Los Alamos. As Tina had mentioned, this is located at the intersection of Augusta and Bell Street. The project location, actually, and this is to answer Commissioner Reed's, the parcel is actually located in this area, as my laser pointer doesn't want to work onto the PowerPoint, but it's actually a portion of that property. There's a vacant piece of the property right next to it. It's separated from the bakery. So they, but that's where our location, you can get an aerial of where this is located. This is a classic infill piece, vacant property, which are, seem to be getting rarer and rarer in the different areas that we're looking at. So this is going to be an excellent addition to the community. Looking at the site, again, here's the site plan located on there. And to answer Commissioner Reed's question, these are some renderings of the property. As you can see, this is the location along Augusta Street, and yes, there are two entrances associated with the mercantile building. And as you can see, the location adjacent to Bell Street and Augusta Street for that mercantile. And also, here's another rendition. It shows clearly the tower element that's located as part of this. So it's going to be a really beautiful structure here, very similar to the mercantile building, which actually Greg Revat was the architect on that project, too, as well. So we're seeing a lot of similarities and uniformities that are recurring as the Bell Street corridor starts to build out. But it gives you an idea on the renderings of what we looked at. This did get a lot of support through the Board of Architectural Review. They did receive preliminary approval and were conditioned to come with final approval as well. And in terms of the mixed structures, the reason I wanted to bring this up is to talk about the second floor of the mercantile. This is going to be a retail commercial on the bottom. And the second floor, there is, I know they're talking of a tentative of having a yoga studio placed in here, and also there is an apartment. This is going to be a market-rate apartment for long-term rental, is what they had imagined on here. So they do want to provide that in terms of that structure. And then as we look at the elevations and the floor plans of the cottages, these are the ones that are located along Waite Street. They are two-story, and these are like a VR, VRBO, Airbnb, two-story, short-term rentals that occur on here. And likewise, with the other cottage that's located, which is Cottage C, that's the other residential, and then you have a retail commercial, smaller building, which is what we call Commercial D, and that's the elevations. One of the aspects of this, and we've talked about this already a little bit in Tina's presentation, there's two main design exceptions, and a lot of this occurred because when the project first came in, when the right-of-way was required, there had to be some alterations that had to be done in terms of the design to meet the project. And so we do have to do two design exceptions. First off, the entrances to Waite Street because of the right-of-way. Originally, what was planned, that they wanted, where the entrances are located onto these structures, and again, we can't see those, but you can see the doors located on Waite Street. There was originally some porches designed, there was some balcony and porch, really nice porch design that was located along them. And that was in light of what was said in the design guidelines, where balconies, fire escapes, that, and porches would be, could go up to six foot into the right-of-way. Unfortunately, that was not, that was not supported by the Public Works staff, so those were taken out. What we did do as a compromise is still with the entrances, there's a small incursion, and that's what the design exception, the Public Works will support, for having stoops and the doors would swing inwards on the two cottages there. So that was able to be supported. The other design exception is that the loading area that goes into the, for the retail commercial use, there is a design exception because they're going to be backing in to there to be able to unload a lot easier. But we do require a design exception to back in instead of going in front. So Public Works does support that design exception, but that was what the intent and what happened in terms of those two design exceptions. With that, I'm going to go ahead and conclude because I really want them to talk to you and talk. So I'm going to introduce Britt Meyer, who is going to talk to you about what their vision of this project's going to be.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Hi, my name's Britt. This is my husband, Ian Meyer. We are really happy to be here today and are thankful that you took the time to look at our project. We are a local family in Los Alamos. We live there with our two kids and our two dogs. And this vision really came about because, one, we feel very lucky to have this opportunity to add to our community, and we enjoy our community. We, I guess, we walk to town, we walk into town, we walk our dogs, we have our kids, we cherish our parks, we love the community services, we like to go downtown and eat at flatbread, and we like to eat at Pico. So this was basically something that, what else could we add to our community that's really growing? So we thought, you know, anything that will enhance daily life, possibly diversify what we already have there, create jobs for our neighbors and friends, and really serve a local need, as well as support the character and the charm that we just love about our town. So, next, hopefully, they will all, the community will benefit as well as our neighbors and visitors with some new retail space on Bell. And that's really what the larger downtown, downstairs space was about, really providing just an opportunity for local entrepreneurs, new businesses, you know, anyone who's retail and service-oriented, hopefully will inhabit that space. We also, the yoga studio on the second floor, the wellness center, we really see a need for. It's designed for yoga and fitness and movement classes, but a designated space for after-school activities, whether it be a dance class or karate, anything. We, as parents in this, in town, we really feel a need for a designated space for this, even educational activities or senior movement classes as well, that, we hope that will be supported by our neighbors as well. And we feel our neighbors have pretty much told us, please, so we're excited about it. The outdoor spaces, like the porches, the walkways, the sidewalks, we're really happy to make our town more accessible and safer and all those things. And then hopefully enjoyable. So, next, the next one. So our commitment, we're in it for the long haul. We've been working with Tina for four years, and we're really thankful that it's finally coming to be and for all the patience and time that it takes to ensure it fits with all the guidelines and also with the character of Los Alamos. And so our, we really want to put this significant investment into our, our community and our town. So in closing, I don't want to take too much time, but this is just really about giving back to where we live, our home. And we're not a commercial developers, we're just a family, and we've invested a lot of time and heart and resources into this, and we hope this will go for future generations as Los Alamos grows. So thank you very much for your time. Thanks.
So in conclusion, you do have a staff recommendation of approval, and as Tina had shown that this is consistent with the county land use regulations and policies, and is consistent with the county's general plan, the Los Alamos Community Plan, and it does provide new mixed use and commercial needs, and we would request approval of our project. And we're available for any questions you may have.
Thanks, Mr. Swank, and also Ms. Meyer. Members of the commission? Mr. Park, please.
I'm going to ask a few questions about the project. It doesn't mean that I oppose the project or question, I support it. But when I see exemplary projects, I often refer to them in later hearings on other projects, so I like to understand it. My first question is probably for the owners. It sounds like you moved to Los Alamos, then you subsequently acquired this property. Am I hearing that right?
Yeah, I was born and raised in, I was born in Santa Maria, as was my mom and grandparents, so I'm third generation, North County resident and property director. And I was raised in Los Olivos. My parents owned a business in Santa Maria. Los Alamos was always kind of on our stop when we tuned from my parents' work. And yes, we moved home just during the pandemic, as most people did, and we want to be closer to my parents, grandparents, family, cousins, who I have in Los Olivos and also in Orchid. So Los Alamos just became, we knew that it was really developing into something wonderful in the last 10 years, and we were so happy to land there. And so, yes, that's, that's true. We came and we couldn't afford a home, but we bought this land and wanted to add to the community.
One reason I'm asking that is sometimes when we'll, we'll see a parcel being developed, it's sort of a halfway accident, you know? It's a parcel somebody's inherited, or it was left over for something else, and it looks like you targeted this parcel to develop. Is that right?
Yes, so this was a very intentional design. After being in Los Alamos for a number of years, we took our own experiences, and we took the community's needs into advisement. We loved the Los Alamos Community Guidelines. We thought they were really nice, and we wanted to do something else. So everything, every bit of design that went into this project was intentional to serve our community and to kind of fit the current landscape in Los Alamos, and we had the benefit of that because when we first moved to Los Alamos, we could actually see the lot from our first rental house. We were on the corner of Main Street and Augusta, so we could see that. So every day, we would drive past it, and like you said, we were looking for a home to purchase, and as you know, with COVID and everything, the market kind of went a little bit crazy, and we saw this opportunity here, and we thought this would be like a fantastic opportunity to help improve.
Raise our kids.
Raise our kids.
Have a business and community, you know?
Make a legacy for us.
It's a small town, and a lot of people know each other, and we love just walking downtown and being a part of it.
Before I ask my questions, I want to explain for the benefit of the rest of the commission why I'm so impressed with your choice of that parcel. Because as, as one comes in from the main freeway access to Los Alamos, that's the first thing you see as you come into the developed area. You know, you pass the recreation little building, but, but the first part of extended buildings is right there. You're it. So that was a very strategic choice, and it's important to do it right, and you're doing it right. So I'm impressed with your choice.
And that's why we had the rendering up of that corner, because that is the gateway to Los Alamos.
Exactly.
Really important design element that was carefully considered.
Well, and as, as Mr. Reed pointed out, the view towards Augusta is important here, it's not just a side street.
And that's why we really made the main entrance, and our architect could speak to us, he helped us a lot, with kind of the shaping of the barn. Instead of turning it from Bell Street, we kind of, we turned the, what is it, the Apex to Augusta, because that's really what you see when you drive in. So that is the entrance, and we're hoping to really make it welcoming and an open space and keep it, you know?
So speaking of the Augusta view, I see Commercial D building.
Oh, the little, yes.
It's 318 square feet, and I'm trying to think of what commercial happens in 318 square feet and what you envisioned there, or is it just sort of, let's see what happens? I don't know.
It was initially.
A palm reader?
Yeah, we had it larger, but.
It was, it was initially larger than that, and it served a very dedicated purpose of extra office space or even a little commercial retail space. As the code and PG&E and other things started to do that, it started to encroach on the sides of that building. So we would have hoped that it would be a little bit larger, but, you know.
But it still has plenty of opportunity, I think, for small little, you know, entrepreneurs or even a little, I know there's a number of masseuses in town looking for a small space. So, you know, there's, I, we believe.
Get your nails painted there.
Yeah, we believe that just providing the space will, there's a lot of opportunity for new businesses and people to come and hopefully have. for new businesses and people to come and hopefully have jobs and things like that.
Okay, I'm looking at the water tower from, from Bell Street, and the tower feature itself, not the tower, the, the tank, okay, the faux tank. I assume it's faux, you're not going to put-
We're not going to put water in it.
No.
Is it connected to anything? Is it?
Yes, it's, it's right, it's up to the building. It actually has a, there's actually a way to access the top floor-
From the second-
Yeah, it has a stairwell in it.
And how do you plan to use it? Is it storage or?
At the moment, we're not quite sure. It is a stairway access as well as storage at the moment.
It's access to this-
Second floor.
Yes.
This, this, this is why I'm asking. Sometimes I want to be sure in our process that we don't cut off things happening that might happen later, to, just to put it crudely. And, you know, I come from a very rural area, and I have a cousin that used to live in a grain elevator that was, you know, changed with some windows to be a house, and that's how we do things in Southern Idaho. So I'm just curious. It strikes me that there may be some use with some windows in there as a meeting room. It'd be a great place for lawyers to have a mediation, you know? I mean, who knows what? And, and I'm just wondering, and this may be a question for Mr. Swank, is our approval today going to cut off some future use of that room, some future modification with maybe a few windows or something to make it something? I don't want to accidentally do that.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Park, it really depends on what that use is. It may require some sort of development plan modification that if it was minor enough, could be a development, you know, director level approval. It's something we would have to talk to staff. And what I would recommend that we do, if something like any opportunity like that, that we would come as a planner consult to see what can be done or not done. There would have to be some sort of permitting that would be in there, maybe just as easy as a land use permit with a building permit. But typically, we can't just go in and just throw something in there unless they just throw some storage up there with no changes and external modifications.
I get that. I just hope that by our action today, we're not foreclosing you from something in, in the future that will, of course, go through the normal process.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Park-
Just a goofy idea.
-staff heard that loud and clear, so.
There you are. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. I just have one quick question. I do really appreciate that this is a family project. I don't know Los Alamos very well, but it looks like it would be very beautiful and that it was part of a vision that included children and seniors, et cetera. Just in the hope of it being successful, Ms. Meyer, could you just describe a little bit more about sort of how you determine what the needs should be?
Yes. I, we have a number of children that we know and families in Los Alamos. For example, very dear friends of ours had a kind of a, started a bus to and from school, a little carpool, and at one point, there was, there was no after-school activities. And we accessed the senior center, which is there, and we tried to get a teacher from a dance studio to come and do a dance class after school. And it, and we had so many kids wanting to participate, and it's just the, the designated space for it wasn't, you know, really for that, and it came challenges and it's constant schedules and everything, yes. So we were, one, this is just, wouldn't it be nice to have a space for this? And as well as yoga, I have attended a yoga, I'm a yoga teacher, but I also attend yoga classes, and I've been to one at the Men's Club, and I've been to one at the Pico Garden, and they have these things offered in the community. People want to come, but there's no designated space for it. And we lived for a long time where I had, we had, we're so lucky to have so many great spaces, and I thought, Los Alamos needs something else than, you know, to go as an activity to do, and Wellness Center was kind of the idea.
And just to add to that is, we have been in the community five years. We know all the local business owners. We talk, we always meet up at the local restaurants. We have a wonderful little community, and we listen to what people were saying, and we listened to what people said they needed. And that was intentional in this design. It wasn't just focused around us. It was, you know, actually living in the town for multiple years, we had the benefit of kind of feeling it. It's just like, you know, if you're going to remodel your house, you should probably live in it for a little bit first. You know, it's this kind of principle. And we're not trying to remodel. What we're trying to do is we're trying to enhance. And we did that by listening first to the community members.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Villa Lovos, are there any public comments for this item? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Reed has, has a comment or a question.
Yeah, I still, I just got a couple of questions. So at this point, there is no real definitive plans for exactly what sort of commercial use will occur in either the larger, the mercantile or in that little, the small area.
Not, not at this time, no.
Okay. All right. Another question, since my colleague here was talking about currently unanticipated units, uses for certain structural elements, that cupola up at the top, is there any access to that, or that's strictly going to be a decorative element?
It's for light.
It's a, yeah, and it's architectural element, it's also for light, it's a light well.
It'd make a great crow's nest if you wanted to have a lookout up there.
But there are a lot of crows in Los Alamos, actually.
That's true. But it's a, it's a, it's a light feature. It's also an air vent for when it gets hot in the summer. So it has multiple purposes that have been included in the architectural design of the building. So the windows can open and hot air can escape. Also, light can come down, and it can light both the mercantile space on the ground floor and the second floor as well.
And after this structure is built, your intent is to keep it and operate it yourselves?
Yes, yes.
The, definitely this yoga studio and, and the property itself, and, and we are looking to see the downstairs might be leased out and see-
Okay, I just meant you'd retain ownership, not market.
Of course, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Now let's go on to any public comments for this item.
I've received no speaker slips, but I do have one hand raised online.
Please.
For any additional speakers, go ahead and raise your virtual hand. Our first speaker will be Tim Seifert.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, good morning, Commissioner, and thank you for having me. I just wanted to say, I, as David Swank said earlier, I was a senior vice president at Dan Blau Construction for 21 years. Dan's passed, that company is no longer in business, but I did work personally with the Myers on this project, on their original design, which, as Mr. Swank has said, it has changed throughout the years because of the various requirements. I met, I met with the Myers when they started this project about four years ago, and they shared their dream of improving Los Alamos, the city in which they live, while creating a commercial development that would allow them to live and work in the same community. They have worked with all the various departments to ensure their vision is brought to life, and I believe the Myers have shown in the last four years that they have listened to and redesigned this project with all the many departments and modifications to meet those requirements. They have worked with the, with their architect and their planner diligently to ensure that the county requests were incorporated into this project design. And I believe this design is a beautiful design and will be nothing but a boon to Los Alamos. I can see you've got to meet the Myers, so you know they're a wonderful couple and wonderful people that truly want to just improve the community in which they live and which they share with their community members. I would just like to say that I approve of this project and would very much like to see you approve it today. And thank you for having me.
And there are no additional speakers.
Thanks very much. With that, I think we can continue with deliberation. Who would like to go first? Mr. Park?
I, I just wanted to add some information. One, if, if you look at Los Alamos, you might think this is at the end of Los Alamos. It's, it's really not. If you look at where the population resides in Los Alamos, this is right at the center of Los Alamos because there's a lot of really nice housing behind it and over to the, to the right, if I'm looking at this, but off to the left, there's a lot of population there as well that is maybe disadvantaged compared to the rest of the population. And it's, it's really great that you're in a location that all of the population of Los Alamos can, can reach it. That's important. A second thing, and Chair Ford, this kind of goes to your question about identifying the needs of the community. I conducted a workshop, maybe you folks were there, I don't remember, at the Men's Club in, I think it was '20 or '21, and it was on the recreational needs of Los Alamos. This was part of the Recreation Master Plan workshops we did. And it was very well attended, and people spoke for hours about what Los Alamos needed for families. It goes to just what you were talking about. And they specifically identified things that you're meeting. So it's, it's, it's not an accident. I know you did assessment of your own, but it's something that I have at least personally heard the community speak about what they wanted, and, and that identified some of those needs that you were speaking of. So thanks.
Excellent, thanks. Mr. Reed?
Well, I'll start off by saying it was a very positive thing when I learned that, you know, this was a project that was initiated during Dan Blau's tenure, because I had nothing but the highest admiration for former Commissioner Blau, both as a commissioner and as a friend. I had been wondering if Tim Seifert would still have an involvement with it, for I was very gratified to hear his public comment. In looking at this project, I appreciate, you know, the five years of thoughtful activity and commitment that you express. In looking at the design, I think it's, it'll be a beautiful gateway into the old town of Los Alamos, and I think it fully achieves, if not exceeds, the goals of the many who worked on the Bell Street and Los Alamos community plans. I think it'll definitely be an asset and a great way to welcome visitors into the community. I also appreciate its contributions in putting in all the various improvements, curb gutters, sidewalks, that are, that are, well, obviously recommend a very significant improvement in the area. So I think initially, it'll be a great asset, and I, I think as time goes on, people will even to a greater degree appreciate the positive contribution it will probably make. So I would be fully in support of taking the recommended actions and allowing this to move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Cooney, do you have any thoughts?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do, I have to say, when I started reading about this project and all of the various, various rules and restrictions that they were faced with, that it might not stand the test of time in terms of the dedication of the developers. But when I read that this was an existing Los Alamos family with two small children and two dogs, the only thing missing is a picture of the dogs, but I'm going to look past that.
Thank you so much. I agree with my fellow commissioners. I would just add that I love that it's a family project, that you have a vision, because aside from the fact that it's, the elevation is really attractive, it looks like it's going to be beautiful, and a comprehensive work done by the applicant and by staff to meet all the requirements, significant community support, zero concerns, I too am very happy to support this. So with that, I'd like to call for a motion. Mr. Reed?
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we adopt the recommended actions contained on Slide 11 of the presentation.
If that's sufficient, great. I'd like to second that motion. And with that, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Cooney?
Aye.
Commissioner Park?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Chair Ford?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Excellent. Thank you all. And with that, I would like to ask for a 10-minute break, please, and put the timer on so we could stay focused.
Item number two regarding environmental justice as an element of the comprehensive plan countywide. This item has been continued twice, from August 27th and October 8th. Mr. Villa Lobos, please read the item into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following is a hearing under request of Planning and Development Department that the County Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors adopt the comprehensive plan element, case number 22 GPA 3, adding the environmental justice element to the county comprehensive plan as required by government code section 65302H, and to determine that the general plan amendment is exempt from sequoia pursuant to state sequel guidelines, section 15061B3.
Thank you. And before we continue, we don't usually ask for ex parte reports, but I know that Mr. Park would like to make one, please.
I would, because it helps explain some of the comments I'll make later. I've heard from a lot of different folks, and in particular, I took a tour, was it last week, with Claire Wyman and Farmer Cameron Anderson, who lives in Gary, and Scott, and I forgot Scott's last name, from Plantell, when Plantell's located in Gary, and heard their concerns. And then, just a few days ago, I met with Lauren Parch of EDC, and Haley Ehlers of Climate First, what's the R mean? Replacement Oil and Gas, and a big raccoon, which looked in the window at us, participated in the meeting. Anyway, but these were really valuable contacts for me. I learned a lot, and I'll express that later. Thanks.
Thank you. So let's continue with the staff presentation. Please introduce yourselves and go forth.
Good morning, Chair Ford and Commissioners. My name is Whitney Wilkinson, and I'm the supervising planner that's been assigned to the environmental justice element project over the past few years. On behalf of the project team, I wanted to thank your commission for the feedback we've received over the course of meetings and the previous hearings on this item. We wanted to recognize and appreciate your contributions and those of stakeholders that have provided public comment. We believe this has made the environmental justice element more precise, clearer, and ultimately, a better work product. And with the changes to the environmental justice element that you will hear today, we believe we've addressed all the issues that have been identified. And we're looking forward to completing this step in the process that has been years in the making, and looking forward to seeking your recommendation to take this to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Zoe Carlson.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Ford and Commissioners. My name is Zoe Carlson. I am a senior planner and the project manager for the county's environmental justice element, and Danielle Moore will also be presenting with me today. And in the last two Planning Commission hearings, we presented in detail the context of the environmental justice element, as well as the content of the element. And after the last hearing in October, we did meet with Commissioner Martinez to discuss some additional changes, in addition to those changes that we presented to your commission in October. And we also provided a staff memorandum, that's in your agenda package, that includes all of those changes presented in October, as well as the changes that we discussed with Commissioner Martinez. So our presentation today will walk through all of the proposed changes to the draft environmental justice element since the August 27th staff report package. And all of the changes that we are proposing are clarifying in nature, just to help the community, members of the public, understand the environmental justice element and our So the red, bold font shown on these slides represents changes to the environmental justice element that we're recommending. The font that is also underlined are new changes that we're proposing since the October 8th hearing, so those were not presented to your commission previously. And there is an additional text that is extra bold or shaded, bold, red, and underlined, which is not reflected in the staff memorandum in your packet, but further clarifies that underlying changes, and we are recommending including this text as well. So specifically, the change shown on this slide is to Chapter 1 of the Environmental Justice Element, Section 1.6. And as stated in our previous presentation, the intent of the environmental justice element is not to propose any new regulations. And so this new underlined text will clarify that if there are new regulations, those will need to go through a public process with opportunities for public engagement, public feedback. And we would also like to specifically note that any changes to regulations also require action by decision makers, such as yourselves. So the proposed edits on this slide will clarify the intention, as well as provide additional context and information about our existing planning process. The changes shown on this slide to Chapter 2, I did present in the October hearing, so you've seen this before. And we're trying to clarify here that the environmental justice element was really a two-step process, and the first step of that process was identifying which communities were environmental justice communities. And that is what we're using the data in the mapping appendix for, that first step. And the second step was to identify the needs of those communities. So we're recommending the text shown on this slide in red be added as introductory text at the beginning of Chapter 2, which would be right before Section 2.1. After our October hearing and meeting with Commissioner Martinez, we did identify the opportunity to better clarify the boundaries that we used for the environmental justice communities. And the red text that is shown on this slide would be added to the end of the first paragraph of Section 2.1, to document the boundaries that were used by staff that are shown in the map of the environmental justice communities. And the census-designated place boundaries and existing developed rural neighborhood boundaries are established community boundaries that are currently in our county comprehensive plan land use element for these communities. And they are the smallest or most granular boundaries that we have for these communities. However, they do include both residential, as well as non-residential land uses within those communities. And so we're proposing additional clarifying language shown here, that the intent of the environmental justice element, the focus is really on the low-income people who are living within these boundaries. The change shown on this slide was also presented to you in our October hearing, and it would move the existing section within the environmental justice element on disproportionate environmental burdens to follow directly after Section 2.1, which is the environmental justice community mapping requirements. And the red text shown on this slide would be introductory text that will clarify that the disproportionate environmental burdens were used to identify the environmental justice communities. Again, that's that step one in the process, and not to prove any sort of environmental risk or justify any regulations. Similar to the change in Section 2.1, the change to Section 2.2, which is the environmental justice terminology shown on this slide, will clarify that the focus of the environmental justice community is, again, with the people who are living within the environmental justice community areas. Commissioner Martinez did help us identify that since the boundaries of the environmental justice communities include areas that are not residential, there was an opportunity to clarify that the focus is really on the people living there. We did provide this text to him, and we heard from Commissioner Martinez prior to the hearing that he would like the language to actually be people living within the residential areas of the environmental justice communities. However, we don't have a definition of what residential area means, and we think changing the language to be that specific language would potentially add a little bit of confusion and distract from the intent of people living within the communities. And we believe that the text, as shown on this slide... And we believe that the text, as shown on this slide, really gets at what Commissioner Martinez was looking for with that clarification. I presented this change to Action 1.2A in the October Planning Commission hearing. And as I mentioned, then, our intention was always that recreational facilities should include parks, open space, and trails, but this text just makes that very clear to anybody reading this particular action. Similarly, as also presented in October, we'd like to make this same change to Action And this further clarifies that parks, open spaces, and trails that are within Environmental Justice Communities do meet this goal of promoting physical activity for community members that reside within these Environmental Justice Communities. Policy 4 is to improve air quality within the Environmental Justice Communities. And I presented the changes to Objective 4.1, as well as changes to Action 4.1A in the October hearing, to clarify that this action, 4.1A, is an ongoing action that is led by the Air Pollution Control District. The new text that's within this action, which is, again, the underlined bold red font, will clarify that any changes to regulations will be first recommended by staff, and they'll be vetted in a public process and approved through a public decision-making, maker-hearing Commissioner Martinez, again, was really helpful in helping us understand that there was some confusion about these, any updates to regulations, how they would occur, and even some concern that there may be updates to regulations that would happen automatically, and that's not the case. So this text will clarify our planning process for members of the public. This change also comes from a change that we presented to your commission in the October hearing. And as mentioned, then, staff had intended fuel reduction efforts to include prescribed burns, as well as all the other, the methods that our fire department uses for fuel reduction. And as I mentioned in our previous hearings, we have had really active participation from other county departments throughout the development of all of the objectives and actions that are in the Environmental Justice Element. And that participation has continued. Many of them are here, joining us virtually today. And after our October presentation, we did hear from the fire department, who mentioned that they also deploy thinning and reduction with hand crews as a strategy for fuel reduction. So we're proposing adding this language to the action as well. This change that is shown within Objective 4.3 was presented in the October hearing. The change to the action shown in the underlined text is new. And as stated previously, we wanted to better clarify that the intention of the Environmental Justice Element is really on the community, the people who are living there. And so making the change from in EJCs, or Environmental Justice Communities, to for the residents of Environmental Justice Communities will clarify that air monitoring will be focused on the air quality for the people who are living within these Environmental Justice Communities. And with that, I'll turn it over to Danielle to take us through the remainder of the presentation.
Thank you for that, Zoe. Action 5.1B is focused on the results of the Community Health Needs Assessment and on preventing health impacts to the communities. Like the other changes since the October hearing, this slide focuses on clarifying that the focus of the action is on residents within the community. It also clarifies that the planning process is public, and would involve recommendations by staff, public review, and action by decision makers before amending the land use and development code. Next slide, please. This change in 5.2 was also presented in the last hearing, and the objective and action are both focused now on limiting new hazardous waste management facilities within or near the Environmental Justice Communities. And the word "limit" was chosen here to describe staff's intent and further clarify the language versus the older language was the wording of "disallow" and "prevent." Next slide, please. Action 5.3B is about possibly recommending adjustments to setbacks for new heavy industrial uses that are near sensitive uses. In the last hearing, staff realized that the language of buffers was confusing under this action and objective, and now it has been workshopped to better clarify staff's intention with the language of buffer adjustment, sorry, of setback requirements. The new proposed changes are to clarify that there would be a public process during this in which the public would be involved, and action would be taken by decision makers before amending the zoning code. Staff has also presented some examples of what sensitive land uses are, which are schools and residences. Next slide, please. Action 5.5A is focused on conducting a Community Health Needs Assessment and possibly recommending updates to regulations depending on the results of that. And this new language here builds on the changes that we heard in the last hearing in October. And the action here is focused on recommending updates, if needed, to regulations to really protect the health of people living within the Environmental Justice Communities. Next slide, please. As outlined in the memo, staff recommends that the Planning Commission make the required findings for approval, determine that the general plan amendment is exempt from the provisions of SEQA, and adopt a resolution recommending that the board adopt the proposed general plan amendment as revised. Next slide, please. Thank you, and staff is now available to help answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I want to express my gratitude to all of you for responding to and your openness to feedback, rather than defensiveness, which can happen after you work so long and hard on a project. So are there any clarifying questions? Yes, from my colleagues? Mr. Park?
Yes. Preliminary, though, I'd like to echo our chair's comments about the good work that you've done. I was kind of surprised how impressed I was with how good this looks with these edits we discussed the last time, and then especially Commissioner Martinez's suggestions. It really does improve the document. I'm pleased about that. So what I want to do is do three things. Ask two questions about the methodology here, just so I understand it better. And these are questions that members of the public have asked me about that I couldn't answer. And then, my third question, just, I basically want to outline a proposal I have for moving this along, and then ask if that is something you think will work from the staff point of view. So let me start with my questions. On defining the communities, when I look at them, the aerials, some appear to have boundaries that are, you know, you can see it, it's along the buildings. Los Alamos looks that way. Others, Gary and Sisquatch, have huge areas, and then a very small number of clustered buildings in the middle. And I'm just wondering why that is, because the impact in Gary and Sisquatch is you have large areas that are just irrigated ground that are part of these communities. And so whatever we do inside those areas will affect those places that don't appear to have anybody living in them.
Commissioner Park through the chair. Thank you for that question. Yeah, that's something that also came up in our conversation with Commissioner Martinez as a point of, a bit of confusion. And the census designated place and the existing developed rural neighborhood are the smallest or most granular boundaries that we have of those communities. They are established designated boundaries for those communities that are already in our County Comprehensive Plan, in our land use element. So we use those same boundaries for those communities. But we also incorporated language throughout the element itself, as well as the applicable actions and objectives, as we've provided with you today, to clarify that even though the boundary includes non, places without homes, we're really, we're looking at improving the lives of the people who do live there.
That's a great segue to my second question. Okay. And I'm probably one of the few persons in the room that spent considerable time in each one of these communities for one reason after another, including Ventacopa. I bet most of you can't even find Ventacopa, but... And they differ. You know, even Gary and Sisquatch, which are, how far apart? They're a mile, something? They're actually very different. Gary has fewer homes, they're larger, they're more what you would call a middle-class homes than Sisquatch. And so I wonder about this element, and it's addressing these communities, which are some of my favorite small communities in the county, but really, the largest concentration of, and largest numbers of disadvantaged people where environmental justice would seem to touch on their lives, which are farmworkers often. They're located in Santa Maria and Orchid. And Santa Maria, of course, is a city, but it has a lot of surrounding areas that are not, including Orchid, which is one of the largest unincorporated communities in California. And it seems anomalous to me somehow that we're focusing on Ventacopa, where very few people live, and we're not talking about Orchid in areas surrounding Santa Maria, where there's thousands and thousands and thousands of people that fit the definition in a sense of those that would benefit from the EJE. So I wonder if you can comment on that, and is that something that can be addressed in some fashion, or should be?
Yeah. Commissioner Park through the chair. That's another great question. So all of the communities that we've identified as Environmental Justice Communities, they meet the state's definition for these communities, which is both, you know, low-income first and foremost, as well as disproportionately environmentally burdened. And all of the communities except for Isla Vista are also included in our land use element as disadvantaged, unincorporated communities. So they've already been established by the county as communities that are low-income and in need of additional services. And so that was foundational in our analysis. We tried to take a conservative approach, including all of the communities that may meet this criteria for low-income. But we were constrained by the census data from the state and the methodology that the state laid out for identifying these communities.
So what I'd like to do is suggest a way for the commission to go forward and get your reaction to it. And I realize there's sort of a tension here, not among people in the room, but between goals. One, we have a state mandate, and we need to move it along. And you've been working really hard to do that. It's taken some time. I remember this first showed up on our agenda, I think it was September of 2024. Is that right? Or was it even earlier? Something like that. Just shows. So we want to move it along. And we want to meet that bare minimum that we need to do. But the other side is, you know, is that all we want to do is meet the bare minimum? This is a very important subject matter, and to do the very best we can in actually achieve environmental justice, maybe we need to do more than just move it along. So how do we adjust these things? And I've had this battle in my own head. I've realized something important, that's why I want to make my disclosures. There is something that is very exciting to me, and I was able to put a finger on it finally, thinking about it, is when I meet with the folks that are there, out in the audience, from various sides, I see the three of you, I'm seeing young people that are really engaged in something important for the community. And that's not something I always see. So that's important. My suggestion would be that we move with haste to get this off the Planning Commission's table, because we had an initial meeting where we learned about it, we had a second meeting and some follow-up meetings, private meetings, where we did our wordsmithing. We could mire ourselves in wordsmithing this to the death for 10 more hearings, and it's not serving that purpose of meeting the state mandates and moving this on to the board. On the other hand, I think that what we have is very, very good, but it is not enough. So I want to outline three things that I'd like to do as recommendations to the board. So in a sense, we would vote today, I hope, if I convince my other commissioners, to adopt the recommendations you have there, move this along, but add three other recommendations for the board to consider and act on. And these recommendations are ones that I've, I'd be proud to say I came up with them myself. It's really more, I got them from other folks, and fine, I got them from all sides asking for these things. So let me go through them. One, the outreach. Let's do more outreach. And specifically, not just surveys, but have workshops. I have experience in that. I did them on the REC Master Plan. They're very effective. Done it, community to community. People in New Cuama, when I did the REC Master Plan ones, were great. People in Los Alamos were great, and I'm sure they'd be otherwise. And I've had requests for this, both from farmers and from farmworker groups. So I'd like to see that. And it's not just how they're held and who holds them with this opportunity to speak and get back and forth, which people like, but what we talk about. The outreach that's been done so far was surveys to find out what are the needs, okay? But now you've done this very important work of developing policies and objectives and actions, so why not have this be a subject of the workshops that people can speak to, just as we have? So I think it's a very important thing. Second, I'd like to see us create a stakeholders' council. I wish I could come up with a better way to phrase that, maybe there is. And this idea, I've heard from, again, different sides to this issue, but even from one of our members of our Board of Supervisors, that this is something that she would like. And this council that would be about the EJE issues could be there to monitor and consult with in the implementation of the Environmental Justice Element. We don't want the Environmental Justice Element to just sit on a shelf and mean nothing. We've met the state mandates, now let's move on. It should be a working document that affects people's lives, and this council could help with that. That's why it would be ongoing. And I would suggest it be created relatively soon, because it could be your intermediary to advise on the workshops and set up the workshops and even facilitate them. And then, finally, on the plan itself, I've come to realize that this is more of a statement of intent than a blueprint of everything you would do for environmental justice. Because if you wanted to make it a true blueprint and go into all the elements we have and ordinances to carry out what this EJE says we'll do, that would take years and more people than we have at LRP right now. And maybe something that happens in the future, but it's nothing you could have started with. So let's get this statement... have started with. So let's get this statement of intent passed. But let's also have a plan on how you go from this introductory document to the implementing portions. And I think the board should hear this. These should be recommendations to board. But also, let's include now in this document, some definitions. What I'm finding is, when I speak to people, they have alarm about phrases and what they mean. And they're not sure what they mean, so that's threatening to them. Or that maybe people that want to see environmental justice, and they're concerned that these ambiguous terms won't get the job done. So I think we should include definitions of key terms. I'll give you two examples that I've heard a lot about. What is a waste hazard, a hazardous waste facility? One I saw in in Gary just a few days ago is these enormous holding tanks for, I can't, was I looking at herbicides or pesticides or fertilizer? It was something. But it's regulated. And then they have a double envelope. It's like a holding tank that the other holding tank sits inside of. And it's to guard from spills and so forth. It's very important for for the public and for farmers. But is that a hazardous waste facility? If it is, then we've got a problem in that area. Another, of course, is what does industrial mean? When you're in Gary, is 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 the plant tail nursery in in Gary industrial, or is it not? So I would say, pass this now with recommendations. I've outlined three of them, and those recommendations are more outreach, stakeholders council, and some elaboration on the plan to include definitions now, and then a a plan for the board on on how the the implementation will be conducted. So what do you think? Is this okay? Do you have a better idea? Do you want me to leave? What do you want? Or do you want to get mired in 10 more hearings on wordsmithing? That's a joke.
Mr. Toddler, Professor.
Mr. Toddler, Professor, you could just confirm what could be next steps, rather than completely with wordsmithing?
Sure, Madam Chair Commissioners. Obviously, we're not into deliberations yet and haven't heard from public comment, but I can just say that with regard to the the approach or the concept of forwarding this package up to the board with a handful of recommendations that's certainly appropriate, and the board can take those into consideration. And I can share some additional thoughts as to what that might look like in that setting at the appropriate time.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Mr. Kune, do you have any clarifying questions?
I will say that in preparation for this meeting, I read carefully a document circulated by staff from the Department of Justice. And and it it gave me some relief to discover that what the state is looking for is along the lines, not exactly the same and not precise and not settled, like the comments of my colleague. But it assured me that the state is not saying that what we need to do is require for future development and all our other elements to have these matters regulated and included. And as staff outlined today, I'm very comfortable that we fit within the intent of the state agencies who are guiding local jurisdictions like us. And I'm leery of going too far. And so I think I would, before I would agree to make significant changes to what staff has prepared, even though they appear to be very reasonable. I don't know if if that means another hearing or whether we could turn this over to staff and then come back at some future time and and see how they did. But just as just as Commissioner Park has indicated, that he wanted to add some material, I think the the addition of material for the county to undertake at this time and to govern its future actions is a big thing. And I'm not qualified to take into account the level of revision that's required. So and the process for getting there.
Thank you. Although Mr. Park and I didn't talk, I do have a couple of questions that might actually flow alongside some of his concerns. So I want to ask, if we approve this today, are we assured that public outreach will continue to inform the affected citizens and gain input on the action plan, and that it will be designed in collaboration with community organizations that have the trust and confidence of the affected populations? I ask this because, to this day, the fear of ICE in our community, specifically intimidation and harm to our citizens, are real. And I think it has to be acknowledged by this commission. So can you assure us about public outreach?
Madam Chair Commissioners, you know, one thing that was commented, I think, in one of the prior hearings, was with this document, you know, there are a lot of implementation efforts that go along with it. This is really the the beginning, not the end. You know, it calls for a number of things, the county and working with in partnership with community organizations and other members of the community, to help bring services and improve access, improve facilities within these communities. All of those efforts will have opportunities for further collaboration, engagement with the public, and working to really get at the heart of the issues within these individual communities, because there is no one-size-fits-all approach. As Commissioner Park indicated, each community is a little different, their needs are a little different, and what we can offer to each of these communities is a little different. So by no means is this the end of public engagement and participation in this process. I see it more as a longstanding, ongoing collaboration and and efforts moving forward once adopted.
Thanks. And just to clarify, you know, I I love the comprehensiveness of the goals and objectives, along with the timeline, the phases. But should we approve this today? Would you also now begin to create ways to evaluate the effectiveness of the actions that you take and gather data that you could share with the board eventually? I just didn't see a reflection of evaluation. Does that make sense?
Madam Chair Commissioners, we just we tried to be a little careful in terms of committing to sort of regular report backs or in the future, just because we are limited in resources and and what we can commit to in the future, given, you know, various state mandates and and other things that are constantly changing and coming at us. So that's certainly the intent, to monitor progress. And to, as has been mentioned, we have this advisory group comprised of the department representatives from the different county departments that that serve these communities. And the intention is for that advisory group to continue to meet and and work together in implementing these efforts. And as that unfolds and continues, we will be tracking progress internally and and meeting the different actions items. And can certainly, if if recommended and adopted by the board, establish some sort of regular or periodic report back. But we didn't want to sort of prematurely commit to anything with any particular frequency in that regard. There's no state requirement. Just the state requirement is that be implemented. But there is no particular state requirement for the the frequency in which there's any sort of reporting or monitoring of that. I did want to, as we get into further deliberation, we can share some, again, information and feedback as to what the recommendations, if carried forward to the board, what that could look like, and what that could mean in terms of the the continued process. But I can save that for later, if that would be preferable.
That sounds fine. And thank you. I wasn't actually requesting or demanding regular reports, but just that there's reflection and evaluation ongoing with the advisory team, and that's perfect. So thank you. With that, Mr. Park?
Oh, I'm just not very good at operating my light.
Okay, then we'll continue with public comment, please.
All right. For those of you online, and you'd like to speak on this item, raise your hand now. We do have four speaker slips, and at least five, six growing number of people online. Shall we start with those in in the hearing room?
Yes, please.
Okay. Our first speaker will be Lauren Parch, to be followed by Michelle, I believe that's Umbres, and then Juan Lares. And Madam Chair, are we going with our standard three minutes?
Yes, please, three minutes each.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Chair Ford and Commissioners. My name is Lauren Parch, and I am the Environmental Justice Program Outreach Coordinator and a staff attorney at the Environmental Defense Center. We are a public interest nonprofit law firm based here in Santa Barbara with the mission of defending nature and advancing environmental justice on California's central coast. We are very excited that the county has undertaken the complex, yet extremely important task of developing an environmental justice element as required by Senate Bill 1000. This undertaking presents the county with the opportunity to prioritize the county's lower-income and environmentally overburdened communities, whose health and well-being has historically suffered. As an initial matter, it is critical that these communities are given the chance to meaningfully participate in this process and provide their invaluable input. We do appreciate the efforts that county staff made before drafting the environmental justice element by collecting surveys from residents living in the eight identified communities. However, the county's outreach work is not finished. Many people who live in the eight identified environmental justice communities were never made aware that the county was developing an environmental justice element, which became apparent during the August 27th and October 8th hearings. We therefore ask the county to please conduct more outreach by coordinating with local community groups to hold a workshop in each of the eight environmental justice communities to gather feedback from residents regarding what practices and policies would best reduce their environmental burdens. We recommend that these workshops be held in the late afternoon to enable working community members to participate, and that they be put on in partnership with local trusted community groups. The Environmental Defense Center would be happy to work with the county to help plan these workshops. Only through effective and thorough community engagement can the environmental justice element truly reflect the needs of communities that the that the element is designed to benefit. As currently drafted, the element's policies have not been designed to actually reduce the pollution and environmental hazards that burden our communities. They are vague. They do not commit the county to taking meaningful action, and they provide no way for the county, let alone the public, to track the implementation or efficacy of these policies in reducing the historic pollution and environmental hazards that continue to harm our community members. For the element's policies to be effective, the California Department of Justice has explained that they should be specific, concrete, binding, include mandatory language, and contain trackable implementation measures. Accordingly, we request that before the Planning Commission sends the environmental justice element to the board, that they revise, that the county revise the element's policies so that they are meaningfully worded, and only after gathering and incorporating more input on the needs of the affected communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Michelle Lambres. I'm a policy advocate for Cause, a nonprofit in Santa Maria, where we work on advocacy surrounding environmental justice, labor rights, but more specifically, effects of pesticide exposure on farmworkers and youth in Santa Maria. And although Santa Maria isn't a disadvantaged community in the EJ Element Plan, we also face the burden of environmental injustices. So things like lack of green spaces, increasing rates of diesel pollution, pesticide exposure. And so on behalf of my community and the EJ communities presented, I want to emphasize the need for community engagement or increased community engagement. Additionally, I ask for meetings regarding the EJ Element to perhaps be more accessible for the community members impacted, but especially for farmworkers and youth. And so I am not very aware of the outreach efforts the county has made to include more community voices, but given lack of participation, I think we can reflect and see why that is, and maybe we can pivot to be more inclusive during this process. I also want to clarify some points mentioned earlier and emphasize that lack of community presence does not mean that this is not important to our community, but rather can be attributed to other factors. Again, accessibility of these meetings and the times that they are held, as well as, you know, the political climate that we are in, and and most of our communities that are being impacted, being afraid of being targeted by by ICE, a threat that is very real and very present in our county regardless of legal status. And so today, I ask that the Planning Commission take these factors into consideration before approving approving the EJ Elements or moving forward to the Board of Supervisors. And more importantly, I ask that the future meetings be held in possibly afternoon hours, in which I can guarantee that more community members will be present. In fact, last November, we did something similar with a hearing with Board of Supervisors. We held a meeting at 3:00 PM, and we had over 100 community members show up to this hearing. Just affirming that if, given the opportunity, community members are interested in part in being part of these spaces and should have the opportunity to be part of something as important as this EJ Element Plan. So if you want to draft an EJ Element that encompasses the voices and the needs of our county, you will take my request into consideration and give our community the opportunity to be part of this process. Thank you.
I have a question for the for the speaker.
Please, Mr. Park.
You know, it's it's my understanding, just living in the community and and watching the rush hours, that the rush hour in Santa Maria is at 3:00 PM, not 5:00 PM.
Yeah.
Because it's workers getting off work. And that and that I would think that your reason for saying, let's hold it in the afternoon, is because those workers will be done with their work for the day. They're not fixing dinner, they can come, and that's an ideal time. Is that right?
That's exactly what happened at the last Board of Supervisor meetings. We did have folks coming out in their work clothes, but they made the effort to be there, as well as youth who get out of school around that same time. It's a lot easier for them to maybe get out out a little bit earlier instead of missing the whole day for for a hearing like this. So I hope that answers your question.
Great. Thanks. I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, of course.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Lares will be our next speaker, to be followed by Clara Weinman.
Good morning, Chair Ford and Commissioners. My name is Juan Latis. I'm Project Director of the Central Coast Climate Justice Network. We're a coalition of environmental social, environmental and social justice organizations, working in and serving environmental justice communities throughout our region. First, I want to recognize and appreciate the significant time and work that county staff and partners have dedicated to developing this environmental justice element. It's no easy task. We value the county's efforts to better understand and address the needs of communities that have historically faced disproportionate environmental burdens. At the same time, we respectfully request that the commission pause advancement of the EJ Element till additional community engagement and revisions are completed. Stepping aside from my pre-written comment, I do appreciate many of the suggestions that Commissioner Park made as potential steps, regardless of the decision made today. As reflected in our joint comment letter, many residents within the eight identified EJ communities were not aware that this process was underway. SB 1000 requires meaningful participation for communities. It is intended to benefit, and more work is needed to meet that standard. To strengthen strengthen the EJ- To strengthen the EJ Element, we respectfully recommend that the county consider the following. Additional workshops in each EJ community scheduled at accessible times and developed with trusted community-based organizations. These smaller house party-style gatherings to build trust and support higher participation. Formation of advisory committees or stakeholder councils made up of community-based organizations and impacted residents to guide implementation. Revisions to ensure policies are specific, enforceable, and trackable with timelines and responsible parties. And clear direction on how policies apply to unmapped or future EJ communities. These steps would help ensure that the EJ Element reflects community-defined priorities, includes clear accountability, and aligns with SB 1000 requirements. Community-based organizations and philanthropic partners across Santa Barbara County are ready to assist. We look forward to aligning with the county and offering support while recognizing that the responsibility of meeting these SB 1000 requirements rests with the county. We share a commitment to healthier, safer, and more equitable communities. With additional engagement and refinement, we believe the EJ Element can more fully realize that vision. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Claire Weinman to be followed by Anne Thomas and then Brooke Baltizer.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Claire Weinman. I'm the President of the Grower Shipper Association of Santa Barbara and San Luis Obispo Counties. Real quick, I just wanted to remind the Commission and our in the public too, of the county's outreach through the Equity Advisory and Outreach Committee? Commission? Committee, thank you. Which I can personally attest, I know that Grower Shipper were members, as is CAUZ, as is MYCOP, as are many of the other environmental partners. So just want to make sure that that didn't get lost in terms of the county's due diligence in providing outreach to some of those organizations, and that might be another resource for ongoing outreach, that that framework is existing, has been involved in the process, and could serve as a resource going forward as well. Mostly want to appreciate the positive changes that have been made and call attention to a few key issues that remain, many of which have been highlighted by Commissioner Park and hope to add a few more details to that. As mentioned, so Gary and Sisquack is a census-designated place, combined is over 2,250 acres. That's more than all the other EJCs in northern Santa Barbara County combined. Almost all of that has zoning and land use designation of agriculture, and I happen to have a little printout here if anybody wants to, if we can put it on, do we have a projector? If that would be helpful or if we want to pull it up. And much of it is prime farmland and similar farmland designation. In fact, only about 60 of those acres are residential or public facilities. That's less than 3% of the acreage in those census-designated places of the area that's proposed to be a future EJC as it's currently mapped. Our October 3rd letter submitted by So Mac Simmons and Dunn explains the legal flexibility in defining these areas. And again, if you look at the map, it's these nice bright yellow areas. So let's, you know, if we can have those be our EJCs for Gary and Sisquack, there's where the individuals reside, I think that's the intent. And if we can get those boundaries to match that is currently in our now I should know the difference between land use and zoning designation, but they're there and they match, and they're yellow. So that's another option. But we must pare down these maps and definitions to better match what's actually on the ground to avoid harming these very communities. Second, as mentioned, words do matter, and we appreciate the advancements and want to highlight a few remaining issues. First of all, when we define what an EJC is, I think it's important to note that a community could be affected. It's not that it is necessarily, it's not a permanent immovable fact. And so I think it would be helpful in making that one minor revision to clarify that. And also, as mentioned, just clarifying what's meant by industrial. I think in our conversations, we've talked about kind of heavy and large scale, but we're concerned about how a broad definition of industrial could drift in the future. And so would also ask for a clear exemption for agricultural production, processing, and support activities from actions such as 4.4 and 5.1. But note that industrial uses also serve a purpose in our community and often require a CUP anyway, as I was trying to look through the LUDC. You know, what did industrial mean? Did we have that defined? And was looking at some of that table of uses in the permitting level.
Please finish your thoughts.
Oh, thank you. We thank you for your leadership and engagement on this and want to get it right before it hits the books. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Anne Thomas.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. Good morning, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for your effort with this project. My comment will be short and sweet today. However, after listening to the presentation, I'm not sure it is still relevant, but we'll mention it anyway. Please consider my request to remove the exemption of SEQA in the Comprehensive Plan Environmental Justice Element and instead preserve SEQA. Our actions today impact the environment, pollution, well-being, and health for all for the future. Let's be good steward of the environment and be remembered as the ones who fought to protect it for generations to come. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Brooke Baltizer to be followed by Haley Ellers.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Ford and Commissioners. My name is Brooke, and I'm the Community Organizing Manager at Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas or Sea Frog. I am also a proud UCSB alumni and a previous resident of Isla Vista, which is considered an environmental justice community. We're excited that the county is moving forward with a much-needed environmental justice element, but today we urge the Commission to hold off on approving the draft element and first prioritize more deep and authentic community engagement in the target unincorporated neighborhoods. The current draft falls short of ensuring that pollution and other environmental risks are reduced in these communities because these communities haven't yet been asked about their priorities and concerns. As a first step, we urge the county to work with trusted community-based organizations and local leaders to host culturally relevant local workshops in the eight identified communities. This will lead the county to identify what specific term definitions, thresholds, policies, and procedural steps need to be considered to protect environmental justice in Santa Barbara County. Isla Vista is the place where I nurtured my passion for climate advocacy and social justice. It's the place that led me down the path to where I am today. And it's the place where students like myself come to learn, grow, and find themselves. But sadly, it has become increasingly inaccessible. Isla Vista is in the 100th percentile for housing burden and poverty rates. Students are paying ridiculous amounts of money to live in overcrowded houses that are in desperate need of health and safety renovations. I remember students who had to live in their car because there was no affordable housing. And beyond unaffordable housing, we had limited access to clean water and air. The water in my apartment caused my housemates and I's hair to fall out, even if we bought filters, and not to mention the tonsil stones we'd get if we took even a sip of the tap water. So how can Isla Vista continue to be a place for young people to learn, grow, and launch into the world if we can't even afford to live there? And if we don't have access to clean water and air? This is why the environmental justice element is so important and why it needs to be improved. In order to develop policies that accurately and effectively support environmental justice communities, you need to start by accurately understanding them. Please consider conducting further community engagement with these communities, strengthen the policies so that the burdens are actually reduced, and ensure that the policies encompass all burdens on environmental justice communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Ms. Ellers to be followed by Riley Clark and then Leslie Weinstein.
Hello, my name is Haley Ellers. I'm the Executive Director at Climate First Replacing Oil and Gas or Sea Frog. We are a central coast-based advocacy organization dedicated to a just transition away from fossil fuels. And we understand that to get there means democratizing the decision-making process for impacted communities when it comes to things like environmental and land use decisions. I echo the excitement from others that the County of Santa Barbara is moving forward with an environmental justice element as required by SB 1000 and supported by best practices guidelines from the Department of Justice, as well as multiple elements from other jurisdictions. Today, we urge the Commission to hold off on approving the draft environmental justice element to ensure sufficient community engagement has been done to lead to enforceable, effective, and valuable policies to protect environmental justice, health, and safety. The currently drafted policies aren't meaningful enough to ensure that the environmental burdens on environmental justice communities are actually reduced instead of maintaining the status quo. The EPA defines environmental justice as not only the, quote, "fair treatment of all people regardless of race, color, national origin, or income", but also, quote, "meaningful involvement of all people with respect to the development, implementation, and enforcement of environmental laws, regulations, and policies." To develop effective pollution reduction policies, including specific definitions, thresholds, timelines, and procedural steps, the county should invest in more culturally relevant and accessible community engagement. This could be done in a variety of methods. For example, the county could connect with local community-based organizations, community groups, philanthropy groups, or even with local neighborhood leaders to host workshops to encourage discussion and conversation about environmental priorities and concerns. These types of workshops are a common activity for counties and cities developing an EJ Element. For example, from 2018 to 2023, when updating the 2040 General Plan in Ventura County, Ventura County alongside community-based organizations hosted multiple in-person workshops on the EJ Element. Most recently, in 2023, to consider a new designation of a community near Santa Paula. This is an opportunity for good governance and impactful policy creation. We urge your Commission to consider creative investments to improve community engagement and therefore improve environmental justice policies. Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next speaker will be Riley Clark to be followed by Leslie Weinstein and then Stephen Waldron.
All right, good morning, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Riley Clark, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Santa Barbara County Trails Council, a nonprofit organization that has worked to protect public trail access, build and maintain safe and sustainable trails, and promote public engagement and land stewardship and trail use for all types of outdoor recreation for over 50 years. I'm also a recent UCSB Environmental Studies graduate and previous resident of Isla Vista. I want to start by stating our appreciation of the recognition and addition of the importance of trails, parks, and open spaces in Policies 1 and 3. These places are essential to ensuring that everyone, especially those in environmental justice communities, has access to nature, recreation, and for the health and well-being that come with it. However, I'd encourage the county to continue integrating procedural justice by keeping community voices involved through an ongoing advisory committee that includes members of environmental justice communities. That kind of inclusion helps ensure the process stays fair, transparent, and grounded in the needs of those most affected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Leslie Weinstein to be followed by Stephen Waldron and then Antoinette Cordero.
Yes, thank you. My name is Leslie Weinstein. I'm a physician assistant and have worked in the field of environmental medicine and environmental justice for many years. First, I'd like to commend and support the first three speakers that were live from EDC, CAUZ, and the community, and totally agree with what they said. I urge you to remove the exemption of the California Environmental Quality Act, also called SEQA, in the Comprehensive Plan Environmental Justice Element and instead preserve SEQA. A personal example, I am one of 30 neighbors unanimously opposing an unpermitted parking lot on our very small street. This unpermitted parking lot is currently suffocating the roots of oak and other trees, is right on the creek with no setback, and will pollute the creek with leaked vehicle oil, gas, and heavy metals each time it rains. SEQA and other environmental protections, such as NEPA and EPA, need to be strengthened, not weakened, ignored, or exempted. Exempting SEQA will promote more exposure to hazardous pollutants, impact our public health, safety, and the environment. Please protect our ability to oppose building and land use permits causing unnecessary, unwanted, and unsafe impacts, especially in environmentally, in environmental justice communities with disproportionately higher pollution exposures. We cannot have environmental justice without SEQA, EPA, and NEPA. Please safeguard our right to protect our environment from unintended harmful consequences. Again, I urge you to remove or reverse the SEQA exemption in this document. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Stephen Waldron to be followed by Antoinette Cordero and then Katie Mickey.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Waldron, Operations Manager at Plant Till Nurseries in Gary, where we've been good neighbors for nearly 40 years, growing over a billion vegetable transplants annually to supply local growers. As a former Gary resident, I support the equity goals, but Gary does not need this regulation. This draft's prescriptive action, like new screenings and buffers, make it harder to do business, which is counterproductive to the county's goals of supporting agriculture. We already protect our community by utilizing integrated pest management without restricted pesticides, quarterly soil and water testing, and environmental stewardship in state-of-the-art facilities. Agriculture is a solution, delivering affordable fresh produce, sustaining jobs, and driving economic strength without new mandates beyond the DPR and EPA rules. We're committed to the future through tech and innovation. We ask that you restructure a PNA as flexible work, as a flexible work plan and exempt compliant operations like ours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Antoinette Cordero to be followed by Katie Mickey.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm Antoinette Cordero. I'm a member of the Coastal Band of the Shemash Nation, and I am a native of Santa Barbara. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of the Environmental Defense Center and a former deputy in the, for almost 25 years in the California Department of Justice, the Attorney General's Office, in the Environment Section and the Civil Rights Enforcement Section before I became Chief of the entire Legal Division. I speak, however, on behalf of myself and no one else. I thank you for all the work that you've done on this, to prepare this document, but I note that, as many of us know from our own work on many things, lots of times, the further you get into a project, the more you find you need to learn about the subject you're dealing with. And I think as many, several of you have noted, this document, although a good start, is not a completed work and needs more work before it can be moved on. A county like ours, truly committed to environmental justice, should embrace the preparation of an environmental justice element as an opportunity to identify disproportionately impacted communities and ways to proactively rectify those impacts. This is not a simple check-the-box exercise. This is not just about moving this task off your desk and onto the Board of Supervisors. This is an opportunity for us to reach out to communities that have been historically underserved, not listened to, and underrepresented. Although I appreciate the work that has gone into this, it is disappointing today to hear our Commissioners dismiss legitimate concerns about substantive comment or lack thereof as mere wordsmithing. This, the lack of community engagement, which many people have noted, is a serious issue. The responses, the document itself acknowledges that responses were very limited to the community outreach that was done, the community survey. And that is evidence that maybe that was not the appropriate method to achieve community input, and other strategies may be needed. Before this document can be moved forward, that community engagement needs to be engaged. That community engagement needs to be achieved. The community needs to be able to say what its concerns are and what it thinks it needs, not only helping to identify the problems, but also the solutions. Couple of things I want to note before my time runs out, and that is that the document is, as many people have noted, is very nonspecific. is, as many people have noted, is very nonspecific and provides very -- very wishy-washy language about exactly what is going to be done. In many cases, the implementation discussion entirely relies on continuing presumably existing practices. Well, obviously, if those practices were sufficient, we wouldn't need this element. In addition, the language in many of the implementation requirements is to support certain activities. Well, it's not clear at all what support means, and I don't know how anybody, the county or the public, would be able to hold anyone accountable for either meeting or not meeting such an element or such a requirement. So I really strongly encourage the Commissioners here to not approve this element until further community engagement is conducted and until language can be included in this document that actually gives it some teeth. I thank you.
Thank you.
Our last hand raised is Katie Micky. If anyone else who hasn't spoken would like to provide public comment, please raise your hand now.
Hello. I am Katie Micky, and I'm the Director of the Santa Barbara Body Therapy Institute and have trained many of the body workers that populate our tourist and spa industry here in Santa Barbara with holistic bodywork. I am here to ask you to hold off on supporting the draft of the Comprehensive Plan for Environmental Justice. What is listed in your agenda that is part of this plan is the exemption of CEQA, and I'm here to request that you revise that and be sure to preserve CEQA. Santa Barbara County's greatest asset is our beautiful environment, and I appreciate all the efforts you described of wanting to make sure that we preserve it. But again, the effectiveness that, as many of our presenters have shared, is in the details, and those details are extremely important, and CEQA is an important part of maintaining environmental justice. So if you remove CEQA, then you are putting our environment at risk from hazardous pollutants and thereby impacting public health. CEQA is an essential safeguard to assuring safety to the environment is required when processing unnecessary, unwanted, and unsafe building and land use permits. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Micky was our last speaker.
Thanks very much. So before the Commission deliberates, I would like to offer to staff any opportunity for rebuttal or clarification to public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I did just want to clarify something with -- we heard a few speakers speak about CEQA, and I just wanted to clarify that we are not exempting CEQA, we're not eliminating CEQA as part of the environmental justice element. What we are recommending the Commission find is that preparation and adoption of the environmental justice element is exempt from CEQA. So I think there's just a misunderstanding there about that wording. I also wanted to acknowledge and appreciate some of the comments with regard to public outreach, some that indicated the lack of public outreach and engagement and encouraged more of that, and Ms. Wyman, who indicated and reminded the Commission and the public that we have presented on numerous occasions with the Equity Advisory and Outreach Committee, which is comprised of various community members and organizations. And so we have an entire appendix to the EJ element that documents the various public outreach efforts that included both surveys as well as some door-to-door surveys for the communities, as well as some community meetings, meeting at -- in the communities where they are in various culturally relevant manners and ways. So I just wanted to make it clear that while there's always -- you can always do more outreach, obviously, there -- you can always do more, that there has been significant outreach and efforts that have been done as part of the preparation of the plan. And so I just wanted to get that on the record, and I'll defer to staff if they wanted to respond or comment on anything else.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you for that, Alex. Chairs and Commissioners, we, in addition to that, one of the chapters and the policies in the draft element, which is Policy Seven, is to promote civic engagement in the public decision-making process among environmental justice community residents, and that particular policy has more objectives than any other policy in the draft Environmental Justice element, further demonstrating our commitment to community engagement on an ongoing basis throughout implementation of the element itself.
Thank you for pointing that out. Mr. Tuttle, did you have any other comments you wanted to make you kind of referred to earlier, or was this covered?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I think, depending on what happens with your deliberation, just wanted to clarify or make sure we were clear in understanding Commissioner Park's recommendations, particularly with regard to like the public outreach, recommending further public outreach. And my understanding from his comments and suggestions are that we take this, assuming recommendation from your Commission, we would take those recommendations to the Board for the Board to consider and deliberate on those recommendations. And if the Board were to agree with the recommendations and seek additional public outreach or engagement, then they would refer the item back to staff to pursue those efforts as part of their deliberations. The Board could also decide and determine at that point that sufficient engagement and outreach efforts have been done and adopted as part of that hearing body. I do believe those discussions and the determination on that is appropriate for the Board of Supervisors to make those decisions. Obviously, any more work on this project with public engagement and outreach requires significant resources and staffing, and any of that work would prevent us from tackling other Board priorities. So I do think those types of decisions, as far as further work to be done on this project and this element, are appropriate for the Board at this point.
That's very helpful. Thank you. So with that, I'd like to move into deliberations, and Mr. Park, do you have any comments?
This was extremely high-quality public comment today, and that illustrates something that that kind of comment, that kind of input, would be so welcome through the vehicles of further outreach and an advisory council of some sort. It gives you a taste of what could be offered. So I continue to believe that those are important things. I know that some of the speakers, in fact, nearly all of them, said these things need to occur before the Planning Commission can move this on to the Board. And, you know, if one of the other Commissioners wants to continue this, I wouldn't be opposed, but I -- my gut feeling is still that we should send this on to the Board, and the Board can hear these discussions of why more outreach, why an advisory council, why get more definitional work in the plan, and make the decisions themselves, which they'll want to do. And I think that Mr. Tuttle makes a very good point. We're always balancing resources here, and frankly, when we come to cost issues, it's not something we do very well at the Planning Commission, it's not our job, but the Board is. And what direction they want to do with these things, it feels like a Board decision, not something that we should weigh in on. I also think that -- well, I'll stop with that. So I'm still favoring what I announced earlier. Oh, I know what I was going to say. I do agree that the cost of involving staff to do workshops and so on and so forth is -- could be a major use of resources, but that's where the groups that speak up and want to have the workshops, they need to weigh in because they can run these workshops, they can find the places to do them. Again, I go back to the Recreation Management Plan workshops. They didn't cost the county anything because they tapped on me to run them, and that was free, and we found community groups to find the facilities and to do the promotion to have it. So there are ways to have workshops and outreach that don't involve forcing county staff to do it. So before I would make any motion, I'd like to just hear from my other Commissioners, where are you today at this moment in time?
Thank you. Mr. Cooney, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The point should not be lost on us that we were on the rails, but we haven't finished the journey, and there are issues that have to be dealt with. But I'm heartened by the comments and the commenters indicating, maybe not directly, but implicitly, that the work that's been done by staff is high-level, and it would be appropriate to put this on the agenda of the Board of Supervisors for either modification or endorsement. For the Planning Commission, you know, we love to say we can always do more work and get a better job done, and I believe we could, but is that our decision or just our desire? So rather than lose in the smoke the work that has been done and was presented to us today with relatively clear indication of what staff recommends, I would like to support that, not to eliminate anything else, but just send that to the Board of Supervisors with staff's recommendation and with the approval of the Planning Commission.
Thanks very much. I will say that at this point, I intend to support this proposal, but understanding time constraints and resources, it is also my sincere hope that the Board will consider the phases carefully. Just a couple thoughts. In my experience in public education for decades, food access and access to physical activity often hamper these burdened communities, and Policy Two and Policy Three are intensely attached to the health and welfare of citizens, especially children. So I was heartened to see that EJ 3.1C is in already Phase One, which we understand might be in the next couple of years, to increase opportunities for cultural arts programs and music, dance, and theater, the visual and performing arts to increase physical activity and social cohesion. I'd like to just ask the Board, when it comes to them, to consider moving EJ 1.1D and EJ 2.1D to also to Phase One, to remove the barriers and costs to physical activity centers. Phase Three, to me, sounds too far away, and also in 2.1D to support school districts and schools and farmers' markets and gardens. To me, this will help us address in a more timely fashion the issues around health and welfare. So with that, may I call? Yes, please.
So Madam Chair, would you entertain a quick break for staff to convene? I think I've heard three different things by the Commissioners. I know Commissioner Park has some resolution -- or some recommendations, and then Chair, you are making some suggestions as well?
Yes.
Okay. And then Commissioner Cooney, you're recommending moving this forward with Commissioner Park's recommendations?
I don't feel strong -- excuse me. I don't feel strongly that we should lose sight of those. In fact, I think they could, with relative ease, be part of what we end up with at the county. My comments were more focused on who should be the decider of whether this is enough or how to go forward, and I, you know, I think we can't do anything totally wrong, regardless of how we vote here.
Okay. And thank you, Commissioner Cooney, to the Chair. Chair, would you entertain a five-minute break for staff to convene to discuss how we can move these recommendations forward, depending on the motion that I anticipate coming forward?
That's -- that sounds fine. I would just clarify that I'm suggesting that they look carefully at phases, the timing of phases, not necessarily the specific ones that I gave, but I did have examples.
And Chair, are you recommending that your changes be included in the motion as well?
No. I think that -- well, my understanding, so, is that we're making recommendations that we'd love for the Board to consider once we've approved it, as it's written and presented.
And can I take 15 seconds to clarify before we break?
Please.
Just to clarify my position, I do not feel that the recommendations that I outlined, and I'm glad to include any others from other Commissioners, I do not see them as revisions to what staff has already done. I'm not asking you to revise the plan, I'm just asking to basically approve the plan with recommendations to the Board on what the Board should do. Personally, if we are to vote on a motion to simply adopt the recommendations that were put up on the screen for us and that do not include recommendations from the Commission, I will not vote for that motion. I would vote for a motion to approve this, send it on to the Board with recommendations. But if it doesn't have the recommendations, I'm going to vote no. Hope that's clear.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, the reason for the break is the communication from the PC to the Board, and so we want to discuss what that looks like, adding those recommendations and how that would be transferred to the Board. So we want to just make sure that it's clear for the Commission what you're voting on and how that is getting transferred to the Board. So that's what we want to discuss during the break.
That sounds fine. Let's take a five-minute break, please.
Welcome back. We're reconvening.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, keep me one second. We took advantage of the break and we've discussed how to frame the recommendations from the Commission. In order to move the recommendations forward to the Board of Supervisors, we recommend -- there's a lot of recommendations in that sentence. We recommend that the resolution be amended to include these recommendations so it's clear what is being transferred to the Board for their consideration. We think we can do that within a few minutes, maybe 15 or less. It is 12, so we could either break for lunch or we can just do a quick break and then come back and we can show you the edits and then have the Commission vote on it. But I think we could get it done within 30 minutes or less.
Well, you said 15.
Well, I added a 15-minute buffer because we never come back on time.
Good for me to know. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. We would like you to take your break and try to make it as quick as possible.
So, Madam Chair, we'll go with a 15. Let's go with a 15-minute break and we'll reconvene at 15 minutes. There's a -- staff is hopeful that we can do it in 10, but I don't share that same sentiment. And then, Madam Chair, we are also including the recommendations that you provided so the Commission can review those recommendations as well.
Thank you.
When we come back, the resolution will include Commissioner Park and Commissioner Ford's -- or Chair Ford's recommendations, and you can view it, and then that's what we'll be voting on today.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. We'll see you in 15 minutes.